Reach that?
Call to order. Can you please rise for the flag salute? Chief Cahill, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa Roll call, please. Mr. Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holzman?
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, added notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. First thing on our agenda tonight is a presentation from the Atlantic County Joint Insurance Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jim Goss, your Atlantic County Appointed Commissioner to the Joint Insurance Fund for Ventnor City. Tonight, we're going to give you a presentation for the renewal, for what's been going on with the JIF for Ventnor. And Paul Miola, who is our Executive Municipal Strategist, will make the presentation. And if you have any questions or concerns after you hear the presentation, we don't want to take up a lot of your time tonight. So what I would like you to do is I would like you to email any of your questions or concerns to myself, to Paul Miola, and to Stan Gunnison, who is our Risk Management Officer.
Now, if we have questions, we're going to have to ask them here because this is the only...
You can. Oh, yes.
Yeah, this is the only time the three of us are allowed to hear.
Oh, absolutely then, yes.
So it'll be more...
Absolutely.
To be done the right way. If we have questions, we will ask.
We follow protocol.
Okay?
Yep. But in the future, like I say, if there is anything that you think of that you don't feel free any time to...
Okay. In the future, we'll do it. Tonight, if we have questions...
But for tonight, absolutely, feel free. We just didn't want to tie your time up.
That's fine.
But we're more than willing to answer any questions we can.
Great. Okay.
Without any further comments, I'm just going to turn you over to Paul Miola.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
Can I have permission to hand these out?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for having me here this evening. As you know, your membership in the Joint Insurance Fund is up this year. And I like to come out and visit with the governing body and let you know how the Joint Insurance Fund is doing, remind you of the JIF's value, and also help you understand some of the resources that are available. So if you flip over, you'll see these are paged numbered in the lower right-hand corner. Just, I'm on page three right now. You know, we think the JIF has been a tremendous success. Ventnor has been a member of the JIF since 1988. We think it represents the most successful example of interlocal cooperation in New Jersey history. Basically, when we started the Joint Insurance Fund back in 1987, it was because insurance companies were canceling coverage for municipal government. They were jacking the rates up pretty heavily. They wouldn't provide certain types of coverage. They didn't want to cover police departments, ambulances, things like that. And the New Jersey Legislature amended Title 40A, and they said two or more local units of government can pool their resources together to collectively insure themselves as a group for the fire, the liability, and workers' compensation. So that's why the JIF started on January 1st, 1987. And one year later, you folks came in. So besides providing affordable coverage, we've also, over the years, developed some superior programs, and we've achieved significant stability and strength. It's noted at the bottom of page three that it's estimated that these joint insurance funds have saved New Jersey taxpayers in excess of $1.3 billion since they formed. Looking at page four, talk about the fact that we've got a very stable 32-year history. Currently, we have over $26 million of surplus and $48 million of cash on hand. And that's important because you want to know that we've got the financial resources to pay your claims when they do occur. If you look at page five, I talk about dividends. What is that? Well, because we're not an insurance company, every penny that's not expended on claims is returned to the members with interest. So since inception, we've returned, the Atlantic JIF has returned over $37 million in dividends. Last year, we returned 3.2 million. We're looking to return the same amount. And here, Ventnor has received close to $2 million of dividends, money that would have been insurance company profits, including $148,000 this past year. Looking at page six, the biggest portion of our budget is what we call loss funds. That's the money we put in the budget to pay the claims of the member municipalities. And you can see over the past few years, our members have been doing a great job of controlling their claims. And the actuary has said, "We don't have to put as much money in the budget to pay claims." Now, 2018 is a bit of an anomaly because what happened is we bumped our self-insured retention. We used to pay the first $300,000 of every claim out of our budget. But we were doing so well, we said, "Why pay more money for reinsurance or excess insurance? Let's bump our retention to half a million dollars." So our loss funding went up, but our overall budget did go down that year. If you look at the next page, we'll take a look at your loss ratio trend. What's a loss ratio? A loss ratio should be more like a golf score, not my golf score, but a good golf score. You want it to be below 100, below 100%. And your loss ratio trend over a six-year average is around about 75%. That means you've incurred about 75 cents on the dollar in claims. And if you look at page eight, that's been accompanied by a significant reduction in your loss funding. So it's recognized that you folks are pulling the rope in the right direction. And if you look at page nine, you'll see you've had about a 10% reduction in your premium since your last renewal. So that's certainly something nice to see, that something in your budget is going down. At the same time, on page 10, you'll see that your dividends have been increasing. And your dividends have gone up dramatically. As a matter of fact, they represent about 14, almost 15% of your annual premiums. And you can use that dividend to offset your premiums. You can take it as a cash dividend, or you can stow it away for a rainy day fund within the Joint Insurance Fund, or split it in some fashion that you like, among those three options. I talk about page 11, about our cost effectiveness. The JIF operates on about 12 cents on the dollar, very, very efficient operation. We're able to do that because, again, we're not an insurance company. We only use contracted services. We have no employees. We don't pay taxes. We're not a governmental agency. We're not an insurance company. So that gives us a great advantage in our overhead department. We also do a lot to control medical costs. We want to make sure we get people to the right doctors right away because we know that that's going to pay dividends in the long run if we get them well and healthy quickly. We manage our litigation very strongly. We use local defense attorneys, and we have a strong litigation management program. And all the members participate in the safety and wellness programs, the claims management and risk management programs. And again, bottom of page 11, I point out the fact that there is no drive for profits in the Joint Insurance Fund. We pay no taxes because we're a quasi-governmental agency. And no residual market cost means that we don't pay to subsidize the New Jersey Assigned Risk Plans for workers' comp and automobiles. So where an insurance company might take 35 cents on the dollar to run the insurance company, we're running on about 12 cents on the dollar. Page 12 talks about member involvement, which gives us local control. The members have a board that sets policy, just like your township committee, your city council does. And they drive the decisions for the Joint Insurance Fund. We hold monthly peer meetings. Jim Goss comes and represents Ventnor. That allows for built-in networking opportunities and allows for great collaboration among the members so that they can talk about issues that they might be facing that present risks to their town. And again, all the members are committed to safety and risk management. You'll see a list of them on page 13. So these are your neighbors. These are the folks that share risk with you in the Joint Insurance Fund. And again, they're all dedicated to managing risk and keeping their premiums as low as they can. But I always like to say on page 14, risk management starts at home. It starts with mayor and council. That moves down to your staff and your management and your risk management consultant to try and make sure that you're practicing safety and you're managing your claims appropriately. So again, it starts with the support from the top. Page 15, I talk about your local risk management team. Donna Peterson does a great job as your safety coordinator. She serves as the liaison between the city and the JIF Safety Director. She chairs your safety committee. She coordinates the safety training to make sure that that information is being disseminated when it comes out from the Safety Director. Lynn Orsady is your claims coordinator. She maintains your claims forms. When a claim comes in, she makes sure it's reported to the proper channels. And then she serves as the relationship between the claims adjusters and the city and relays that information back and forth. I already mentioned Jim Goss. He is your representative to the JIF. He serves on JIF boards, committees. He's on the executive committee right now. He monitors your participation and he protects your interests. So when decisions are being made, he takes a look, you know, how is this going to directly affect Ventnor? And, you know, brings things up that may be of concern. And then Stan Gunnison is your risk management consultant. Now, this is a role that used to be filled by an insurance agent, but he's not an agent of the JIF. He's not an agent of an insurance company. He's under contract with Ventnor to provide specific risk management services to the city. Page 16, I talk about some key areas where we've been helping you manage risk. Employment practices and public officials' liability. We put out periodic compliance updates so that your personnel manuals are up to date. We conducted elected officials and employee training in the areas of sexual harassment, hostile work environment, things of that nature. And we've implemented a Mel helpline this year that I'll tell you a little bit more about in the next slide or two. Cyber, a big issue today. Municipalities are being hacked. It's a terrible thing to come in on a Monday morning and see that your screen is blue and somebody is demanding ransom for you to get your data back. We provide the necessary coverage, great resources, online training. As a matter of fact, about 80% of your employees have already taken the online training to help them recognize any cyber risk that they might be facing at their desk and other computer terminals. We conduct vulnerability assessments where we will actually come in and see if you have any open ports where a hacker can get in and attack your network. And we also do phishing exercises where we will send an email to your employees and see if they click on it from an unknown source, or maybe there's an attachment. And if they do, we say, "You've been hacked, and you need to take this five-minute training exercise so that you understand some of the risks of opening up emails." And then our wellness program. We have websites and newsletters that go out to the members about promoting wellness. We just hired a new wellness director. She's coming out of Cape May County. She comes and visits, helps you put your own program together. There's also some incentives in there to help you develop your own wellness activities. So turning to page 17, just to dive deeper on the employment practices liability. We just put a new helpline in this year. That means that you can pick up the phone. Let's say your administrator has a question about a particular situation that's coming up, maybe an employee is requesting an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act. You can pick up the phone, can talk to one of our attorneys, get some guidance on that. If necessary, can be referred to an attorney that specializes in defending these claims, and there's no cost to the city for that. Page 18, the Mel Cyber Risk Management Plan. This is something we put out about a year and a half ago. There's two levels of standards to comply with. They mostly require elbow grease, for example, putting in policies to change employee passwords periodically, having standard backups performed on a regular basis. And if you comply with these standards, you're eligible for reimbursement of the deductible under this coverage. It carries a $10,000 deductible, but you can eliminate $5,000 or even up to $7,500 of that deductible by complying with this program. And this is something that is posted on our website. You can turn it over to your IT professional. And I'm certain that you guys probably already comply with most of the standards. And simply having your IT person verify that and submit the required documentation, you'd be in a position to reduce that deductible and also make sure that you're protecting the city and its assets from potential hackers. Page 19, our wellness program. We recognize healthy employees are less likely to get hurt on the job. They're likely to recover more quickly. That's why we started to implement this program, to try and help us with our workers' compensation claim stream. And again, our wellness director does come out and help you set up your own wellness committee and your wellness activities. Great newsletters published once a month that circulate among your staff. Gives you tips and recipes, exercises, things of that nature. Page 20, I like to show a comparison. These are two actual cases that our claims administrator brought to our attention. We know that no two employees are identical, but we tried to get two employees that are close as possible. Both age 53. They both had a left rotator cuff tear. Employee on the left, obese, a smoker, was out of work 20 weeks. We find with these cases, there's delayed surgery, longer recovery times. The cost of that claim, $105,000. Employee on the right, same injury, healthy weight, non-smoker, out of work eight weeks, only cost $61,000. So we think our investment in wellness is not only good for the employees in and of itself, but it also makes financial sense. And, you know, we're eager to see all of our members get on board with that program. So flipping back to page 22, just a couple of new items. Tulip, the Tenant Users Liability Insurance Policy. Somebody comes in, they want to use one of your facilities for a birthday party, for an engagement party, for a Sweet 16 party, something like that. They don't have insurance. You can hand them this brochure. They can go online. They can use their credit card. For about $60, $70, they can get a million-dollar liability policy that automatically names the city of Ventnor as an additional insured so that if something does happen, there's a lawsuit, you're going to be protected, and they are as well. So that's a great program, and that information is also on our website. And we just finished updating our Certificate of Insurance Guidelines. These will be put out in the fall. Our attorney is just doing a final review on them right now. But it's recommendations for different type of coverage and insurance limits for contractors or vendors that are coming into the city to do work. And we've updated those also to make sure that these people have the proper cyber protection because if one of your vendors releases your employee information or personally identifiable information, you can be responsible for that as well. So we want to make sure that those vendors are also carrying the proper insurance. So you'll see those very shortly. And then on page 23, we just finished developing some land use training for your land use board members. There have been some rather nasty claims around the state. And we just put out, it's a nice booklet. We're going to be sending that out to your planning board attorney to review with the planning board. It should take about 20 minutes for that review, but just to kind of update them and remind them of some of their responsibilities to act as quasi-judicial body. And then recent legislation that impacts you. About two months ago, the New Jersey Legislature passed the Sexual Abuse and Molestation Act, which basically opens up the statute of limitations for people to bring claims against entities in New Jersey. This has the potential to bring claims against Ventnor for acts that happened 20 years ago. So we're putting together a whole new program of guidance in that area as well. There will be some training. There will be some videos for your staff. And it's comforting to know that you've been in the JIF since 1988. We've always provided insurance coverage for this. So should you have a claim that goes back that far, the JIF is going to step in and take care of you. If the claim occurred prior to 1988, we have copies of your old policies from before you came in the JIF, and you go against that insurance company that you had at the time, and they'll be obligated because companies didn't have exclusions on those claims way back when. So that's all I have for tonight, by behalf of the entertained, any questions that you have?
Paul?
Yes?
I will start, and I sincerely hope that you bring this message back to the people that need to hear it at the JIF.
Sure.
We are, obviously, we have a fine history with the JIF. But we are seeing, in our opinion, the JIF transform from an entity that would find a way to cover municipalities when claims were brought against them to be more similar to the insurance companies that we used to use before the JIF, where they're finding reasons to deny coverage. And the message we want to make clear is we want you to find ways to provide coverage, not deny it. We understand. There's exclusions, contractual actions, things of that nature. That's fine. We had a particular situation, C-H and P, where neighbors sued each other. The city of Ventnor was not a party to that suit. But all the factual basis was the same. Our representatives sent that information to the JIF. Subsequent to that happening, Vender was brought into the suit, or there was a second suit where Vender was named as defendant. Same property, same facts. Thinking that they had already sent the previous suit up, they were leaving, sending this suit. And the JIF's response was, "Well, you missed the time deadline, so we're not going to provide coverage." With our understanding being the reason those time deadlines are in place so the insurance company can be informed that a claim's in a timely matter, do investigations, and make sure their rights are not jeopardized.
Right.
Clearly, they had the information. It was just a technical way of finding a method to deny our claim.
Wow, I'm surprised to hear that. I'm glad you're bringing that to my attention.
What made the matter worse is that, under the documents, the insurance documents, my understanding is that if there's a denial of coverage, you can go through an arbitration process, or a process with the JIF, to say, "Hey, guys, you should be providing us coverage."
Yes.
I sent the letters out to everyone, including Paul, and never got a response.
Boy, I'm...
I eventually got a response from Dave DeWes, who I love, great guy. And he said, "Tim, do you really want to do this?" And I was like, "Yeah, Dave. I mean, we want these folks to provide us coverage." And I don't think that was Dave's response. I think that was his marching order. So that's not a criticism of Dave.
All right.
Now, the end result is the claim settled for 10 grand. The JIF paid $7,500 of that. The city had to pay for attorney's fees. But we want to emphasize to you, we don't want them to find technicalities to deny coverage when really, in good faith, they should provide.
I agree with you. Tim, I'm going to look into this.
Please.
This is the first I'm hearing about it, and it's not the way we operate. So I'd like to dig into it and find out exactly what happened and get back to you on it, please.
I'd appreciate that.
I will.
And when you look at the documents that I sent up there, there was another matter, Sandstock, that was based in negligence and contract. And they denied that also, saying, "Well, it's a contract matter." Now, we got that plaintiff to withdraw their complaint. They refiled, and they refiled only under contract, which we know is not covered.
Right.
It's fine.
Right, yeah.
But it seemed to us that when it really could have gone either way, they erred on the side of not providing coverage. And that causes us, in other words, we would rather have coverage and have those dividends or the loss ratios changed a little bit, but be covered so that we know when something happens, we'll have coverage. That's the message you want to get from Paul.
Tim, it's been heard. I'm going to look into it because I've heard about this before. And I'm kind of surprised, I'm going to tell you the truth, because I've been involved with the JIF since 1987, and that's always been my philosophy. Let's find a way to provide coverage within the, you know, within the four corners of the document itself and not find a way to deny a claim. So, thank you. I will look.
And it's possible that it was a coincidence and that just two cases in a row in Ventnor, and I don't even know if it was the same person reviewing it, that determination was made, but to us, it appeared like a pattern.
Okay.
All right?
And I will get back to you in writing. I mean, I'm not just going to call you. I'm going to give you a letter on it. Once I investigate.
And including my letters asking to go ahead with arbitration or mediation so we can find out how to cover this.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that either. Okay, you got it. All right, absolutely.
Yeah, we were extremely disappointed in that. And that's saying it lightly because you're going to go do some research.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I was extremely upset with this denial. You know, you're aware of something already, and you say, "Oh, you missed the deadline." You're already aware of it. So that doesn't fly with me. I'm sure it doesn't fly with the mayor and Commissioner Kriebel. So if you could get back to us with an answer on that, that would be appreciated.
Oh, I will. Absolutely.
But, you know, to, you know, split hairs like that?
Yeah.
Not a huge amount of money, but every dollar counts up here. It really does.
Oh, believe me.
So I appreciate the very thorough presentation. That was good.
Yeah, it was great.
Learned a few things. I'll be interested to see the planning board stuff that comes out because I sit there, so...
I'm disappointed to hear this, and I will absolutely follow up, Tim.
And we're not trying to kill the messenger, Paul.
No, yeah.
Oh, no.
I want you to have a good stomach.
Paul, you did a beautiful job.
I take it seriously, believe me. I do.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
You know, I would not be truthful if I didn't tell you that when things would come across my desk, I felt over the last couple, like we were getting pushed back.
Yeah.
And we don't want to feel that way.
No, I agree. I don't want you to feel that way.
He gave you the details. I just feel like they're not working with us, for us. Sometimes it's like, are they working against us? I'm confused. So it's not shooting you as a messenger.
No, no, no.
Presentation's beautiful, but this is something that it's not just our attorney.
We feel that way.
It's the governing body. We...
We shouldn't be this. We need to be this.
No, because you're part owners of the JIF.
Exactly.
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 Right.
We're not supposed to be acting like an insurance company. That's the whole thing.
Right. And that's the perception right now.
Yeah, well, I want to change that perception, so just give me an opportunity.
Appreciate that.
Can I just ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
And maybe you can get back to me in an email so we don't have to go through back and forth. How long has the cybersecurity coverage been in place? Is that...
The coverage went into, I believe it was 2013, when we first started to provide the insurance coverage for that.
Okay. Do you know if you have done any test attempts at hacking? Have you got analytics on for us yet?
I can get them for you. I don't know them off the top of my head, but I can, so...
Ventnor Analytics. And the last one should be, how do we qualify for that refund?
Yes, well, I think that's a question for...
That's why you got to talk to your IT person.
Right, that's why Tim's asking the question.
And just follow up with me if you can't find it on the website.
Okay.
Follow up on that is how much of the cybersecurity coverage? It doesn't say in your presentation because these numbers are huge now when municipalities or cities or businesses are held hostage for these. What kind of coverage? It just says coverage.
Okay, right now, and I don't know what limits you selected. You have some options to select coverage limits? I think the basic limit is $2 million.
Maybe you can get back to me.
And I'll find out what your limit is, yep.
And...
I already wrote that down, yeah.
And I think the tulip is, I think we'll use that. I think we have a lot of events in our city.
Yeah, that's really good.
Mayor's perked up.
Let me...
That's good news.
Here you go.
That can help the smaller entities that don't know how to get that.
For people that want a birthday party, but they don't own a home, so they don't have a door.
Yeah, so it's a small way to get the door open for those.
Yes.
I like that.
I like that, too.
Donna should be aware of that.
Yeah.
If she isn't, she should be made.
If she isn't, I haven't seen it at the special events committee yet, so that brought up, so we'll bring that up.
And it can be canceled up until midnight of the day before the event. Let's suppose they decide they're not going through with it.
Right.
You get a full refund. It's really easy to use.
Yeah.
Yeah, that...
I think it's great.
I like that.
Good.
And then my last question. You said claims are shared. Are they shared within the pool of JIF? And then the aggregate is returned, or is it just Ventnor's claims?
No. The way it works is we have a budget. Everybody contributes to a budget. Let's suppose you chipped in 10% into that year's budget for loss funds. You'll get back 10% of the surplus.
Roger.
And that's in the statutes, in the regs. It's proportionate to what you paid in.
Great. It's a good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thanks, Jimmy. Thank you. Yes.
Hey, Jim, thanks.
Okay. We ready?
We're ready.
Okay. We do not have any department head reports. Am I correct? Or do we? No? We're good?
Chief Cahill talked about the fire.
Okay. We are not discussing capital. So in the regular portion, after we're done the workshop, we will have minutes for July 11th and July 25th to approve. We will be introducing ordinance 2019-017. And that is an ordinance, we're amending the 2017-24 ordinance, our salaries. And all that is is because we have a group of public work employees that their titles are being changed due to a civil service specialist review.
They've been working out a title.
They've been working out a title.
This is a better way to get it done and get them paid appropriately.
Exactly, yes. We do not have any public hearings or adoptions of ordinances. And then we do have a list of resolutions that we will be voting on by consent. The first resolution, 2019-252, is an inter-local service agreement with the Atlantic County Improvement Authority for administering the program Income from Small City Grants for Housing Rehabilitation.
That's a renewal.
That's a renewal, yes. It's a renewal. So we're good with that.
It's a good program run by then for a lot of the communities in the county.
Yes. 2019-253 to 2019-256 are resolutions of tax abatements for individual properties. We okay with that?
Yep.
2019-257 is authorizing the participation in New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Forest Fire Service Cooperative Agreements. What is that about? What exactly is that one?
Chief Cahill can explain.
Oh, okay.
That's a co-op, which I got wind of from talking to a peer. And it is a program where it is accessed the needs. Federal government and military equipment is available to the fire service through the Forest Fire and the Department of the Interior. It's a program I've never heard of. Nobody I've spoken to had ever heard of it. It's a program I'd never heard of, nobody I've even spoke to had ever heard of it, but it's out there.
Great.
We're in need of high, uh...
High-wheeled vehicles.
High-wheeled vehicles, the vehicles we currently have are county-owned and are in a plorable condition, we're gonna get all brand new vehicles at no cost to the city.
Great.
Nice, and you can, we've talked about this offline, and it just, we can kinda fix them up for what, you know, soup them up if we want to.
There are no limits to what we can do to any of the vehicles, modify them, and in two and four years, they inspect them, and they give us the type of equipment they want.
Great.
Nice.
It's, it's a great program, it comes directly to the fire service, we don't have to, the, when you go through the law enforcement, there's no limitations on equipment available to law enforcement, and there will be in this heavy equipment for fire.
I think Brigantine, I don't know where they got theirs from, but they did some nice modifications to it.
Military surplus.
They purchased it.
Okay.
That was a purchase date.
Yeah, some of the stuff they've done to it.
Oh, it's, it's now a valuable piece of their departmental...
Yep, yep, so awesome, that's great.
We don't have that now.
Good.
For us to go out and try to do something in high flood waters, we're putting vehicles that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars at risk that we don't need to do.
Agreed.
And we will not be doing it so freely.
Okay.
What's the timeline on that, you have any?
Yeah, it was mine.
You're stuck one time.
Okay. Can we vote on this one?
I already have a wish list, I'm ready to send over.
Okay, great.
For the fire service.
Yep.
He told me to send whatever I want, they do the research, they pick it up and provide them.
I saw a modified Humvee in C aisle.
We are not authorized, uh, those companies in...
It was a great beach ambulance, it was basically set up as an ambulance that can ride the beach, snow, anything.
That's the only thing they told me I asked for that was not available.
Never get whatever.
Because of the military.
I don't know what, I mean, I'm gonna do an ambulance truck anyway.
Interesting, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. You've saved the city a lot of money since you've been chief.
Sometimes better be lucky than good.
That's right. The next resolution, two thousand nineteen dash two-five-eight, is a tax overpayment we're refunding, and then from two thousand nineteen, two fifty-nine to two thousand nineteen, two sixty-seven, are all the public work employees individually listed by name and title change, as I said earlier, the salary. So they've been working out a title, and we have a civil service specialist retired from the state of New Jersey, who is here one day a week, doing desk audits to make sure people are in the proper titles. And then...
And that actually can work out in our benefit.
Absolutely, yes.
Because we're not paying them out of title, we're paying them in a title.
Exactly.
Because once they work a certain amount of time out of title...
Then you have to go, and then retro.
They get a bump.
Yes, exactly. Okay, then we go all the way down to two thousand nineteen dash two sixty-eight, and that is authorizing us to hire a part-time school traffic guard. Two thousand nineteen dash two sixty-nine, that is our new fire truck, am I correct? Chief Cahill, would you like to tell us all about that?
Uh, yes, you're approving the purchasing of a twin apparatus, which is a combination ladder and pumping engine, it'll take the place of a nineteen eighty-seven vehicle we currently have in service. It will allow us some redundancy on the use of ladders, in which we've worked around it, some interesting events we've had, like, that have been manned up, where we needed multiple ladders, and we're using mutual aid cities, when they get there, we'll be able to be much more efficient with the equipment. We're probably gonna get another break on our joint, our ISO rating for insurance service, because now we have two aerial apparatuses, which will look good for them, and if one vehicle goes down, we're not totally without an aerial, which happened two years ago, forty-eight days in that period of time, we had three third alarm fires, required aerial apparatus from out of the city. It's a safer piece of equipment.
Right, right.
And replacing a almost forty-year-old vehicle.
Right.
Okay.
I know, okay, so, we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so now, what's not on the agenda, came in last minute, we have resolution two thousand nineteen dash two-seven-zero, Commissioner Kriebel's gonna talk about that, and then we have two-seven-one and two-seven-two, which are retirements, resignations of two employees, correct, Lisa?
Correct.
One will be for December thirty-first, one is for March thirty-first.
Right, and then they'll just be added on the next agenda?
No, they're added on tonight.
I have them ready tonight to give the numbers.
Tonight.
Oh, you have the written form?
I do, yes, and I have them in front of you, too.
You were not paying, Mr. McGuire, you didn't pay attention, I said we have three more resolutions that aren't written on the agenda that we're gonna vote on by consent.
Good for you, Lisa.
They aren't there, if you wanna look at them real quick, but they're right there on your, in your path.
So they're ready to go. So two-seventy is the purchasing of some security, safety items, that Commissioner Kriebel's gonna talk about a little bit, and then the other two, Mr. McGuire, are the two resignations. You're up.
Okay, so last week, we were given a presentation by JCT Solutions that was vetted by the Police Department as a provider for added security to this building in the form of door security, cameras, and a kiosk at the entrance on Cambridge Avenue, with a camera, as well as a cameraed entrance to the mayor's office, and potentially one for the clerk's office. So it's gonna take, it's a combination of, a culmination of security needs that this building has had for years, and since we got an office, has always been a concern, especially, and every year, it's kind of gotten more and more to the forefront. This proposal includes the physical devices and the installation of electronic keys that activate with either a card, or if a police officer has someone in custody, a wristband, it's a very, it's a, it's a very high-tech system that also tracks who is going through what door at what time. So it almost acts as a, as a...
Audit trail.
An audit trail in a way.
Audit trail people.
But, and then, and then there's, included in it is the software dashboard that is also very sophisticated, that certain people, administrators, can, can give people certain accesses, turn certain accesses off, open up every door, lock down the whole building, it's all wireless on a very low signal, so that the batteries last years, so it's not a Wi-Fi or Bluetooth thing, it's a, it's a very, it's used, and the company itself is based out of New York, Northern Jersey, so that's kind of their proving grounds, they've been at it for quite a while, that they get a lot of municipalities, a lot of big corporations, that they've gone through the bugging of these things, so we're getting kind of the benefit of that. So it, the material is gonna be historically accurate to our finishes, like an oil-rub bronze, it's very discreet, the, the one that, the key pad for finance will have a key code as well, so it's a double security, so only, and then, and then, so it really answers the, the physical security, but then we're also gonna be changing the behavior of the people, it's gonna, this is a police station, when it's not in use as an office, and a commission office.
Right.
So during after-hours, there's gonna be a change in access.
Right.
So this, as far as the bathrooms and things like that, so this is one step in that, and I think it's, it's been very well-vetted, they've, they even, we even twisted their arm during the presentation, and they threw in a couple more cameras and camera phones at the number that we have it at, and, and then, it doesn't affect any, there's a separate line item, there was conversations about the doors, doesn't affect, this is not about the doors, although the Police Department does have in their capital budget, this is capital as well, changing some of the doors to more security doors on this level, we are, discuss the design of the doors on the more public spaces to either match what we have, or to add three M bulletproof glass to the glasses, like, say, in our offices, to give them...
Trying to keep some of the historic...
Right.
Absolutely, I think we all love that, but in this, in this day and age, and then, and anybody that's been in any municipal building, it's, it's just, we are, we are, we have some...
That'd be precaution.
Yes.
Precautions taken, agreed.
And, and I think we can do that and still, and still keep the...
Good.
The beauty.
The beauty of the building, but this is a really impressive...
What's the mail?
Hundred and five, seven ninety-eight, seventy-three cents, and, like I said, there's gonna be some, it also has some interconnectivity to cameras, as we go forward with the rest of the building, the cameras that come with the system, you'll be able to, the people will be able to scroll through all the cameras in the building, but it's a good deal.
Yeah, okay.
We were all impressed.
Yeah.
And we have that resolution, correct, Lisa?
You do.
Okay, we're good, all right, thank you. And then, two-seventy and two-se, two-seventy-one and two-seventy-two are the two employees that have given their letters of retirement, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we have those resolutions, yes?
We do.
So that will, that's the end of our resolutions, that we will be voting on by consent, we will have approval of bills and payroll, and our next item is discussion items. Do we have any discuss, I didn't see...
We do.
We do.
We do. You want me to at least...
No, never mind, I just didn't have to, they're in file, yeah.
What's, you have the...
Tim's got.
Oh, Tim, you got it.
I have.
These are, these are fun ones.
These are good, yeah.
Ventnor Proud stuff.
Okay.
All right.
You're gonna, go for it.
I have a brief presentation from the Ventnor City Lifeguards, the twenty-fifth Bill Howarth Women's Lifeguard Invitational, August eighth took place, the Ventnor Beach Patrol Women won the, won the, the Invitational, the team got a solid start with the first-place victory in the doubles race with Stacy Price and Katie Fisher, Colleen Callahan, unbelievable swimmer, contributed crucial point with fifth place in the ocean swim, Stacy Price followed up with first place of the night in the single race, singles race, and team trophy was solidified by a strong second in the surf dash by Stacy Price, Emma Bergman, Kelly McDevitt, and Grace Bunkary, so kudos to the ladies there on that, on that event. And then, we really had a winning end of the season.
We did, we really did.
The, at the Brett Tarbiton in, in, I guess that's in Wildwood, Brett Hanson and Doug Davis won the Around the Island Row in the pair, finished in two hours, thirty-seven minutes and twenty-four seconds.
Twenty miles.
Twenty miles.
In a lifeguard boat.
Besting a field of twenty-one cruises in a twenty-mile race.
Better than men and me.
Yeah, that's a...
And it was, and it was Doug's first, that length row.
Right.
Brett did it last year, and his partner said, no, thanks this year, so, but Doug stepped in and did a phenomenal job.
I have a bunch of friends that have done that over the years, and they, it's a love-hate relationship with that race.
Yep.
They, they wanna do it, but they, but they take a day or two off after.
They're, they're both collegiate rowers, Brett rode for Penn.
Right.
And Doug rode, rode for Drexel, so, both, both...
Two hours and thirty-seven minutes.
Nonstop.
And that was the fastest.
The fastest.
We also, big race, the, the only race that really has life-saving skills tested with the dummy bag and things like that, has always been one of our great local races, the Gaudi's. On August sixteenth, team started strong with a victory from Matt Spire, Joe Roche in the doubles race rescue pickup, followed by a sixth-place finish by T.J. Given in the swim, added to their lead with a solid third place in the combination swim-row rescue race with Colleen again, Callahan, and rower Jack Marzak.
Marzak.
Marzak, and Pat Schover, so the Ventnor won the Gaudi Cup with a commanding victory in the singles row by Captain David Funk, who wrote this, by the way. And the Gaudi's were unique, because they, like I said, showcased simulated rescues and allowed competitors to highlight their rescuing skills, it's a really fun race to watch, I'm sorry.
I have, I was at, well, I wasn't at the North Wildwood, the other races I was there, the, the guys and girls did a great job, I mean, they really came together as a team at the end of the season.
Right.
It's always nice to win your home races, right? Tim knows that from, from back days in Brigantine and whatever, but it's nice.
So we won home.
We won our races, yeah, the two races on our beach, so it's nice.
Exactly, that's nice.
And, and, you know, Billy would've been proud of the girls, absolutely, he would've been proud.
I thought of him as soon as I saw the headline that they won, yeah.
It was nice.
All right, good.
Good stuff.
Anything else?
Nope. Um, do I do these under...
Yeah, we do that under...
Under comments, Commissioner's comments, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so now, we'll open up to the public, if anyone'd like to speak on anything that we discussed thus far, if you have something that we didn't discuss, there'll be a public portion at the very end. So do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Introduce yourself, sir.
Andy Starr, five hundred North Cambridge.
Thank you.
Tim, just to give you, and clarify on your report, you just gave two-seventy, the rev solution on security on the building?
Yeah.
I've only seen it on social media so far, a little bit, so this is the first time I'm hearing some nuts and bolts, can you clarify on the impact during business hours for general population coming in for beach badges, how will that change or not change?
It shouldn't change during business hours, the, or meetings, when we have meetings here, the, the only, the only condition that has been discussed as a change would be closing the doors on Ocean, keeping them secure for only people to go through with security cards, and that making the, and, and the, making the primary access on, on Cambridge as a security measure, but as far as getting into offices or discussing...
Oh, no, the difference would be, they'll get into the building, the difference, Andy, will be, someone will not be able to just walk into Lisa's office.
Right, like I do every other day.
Exactly, there you go, that's the difference.
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll still be able to get into the building.
You're the reason.
They'll still be able to get into the building.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and did you discuss that issue, whether there were any alternatives, given And, and did you just discuss that issue, whether there were any alternatives, given our, the state of our world these days, whether some kind of, you know, people being punched in? It would cause all kinds of upset, get people really upset, but it would increase security.
They'll have access to get into the building and get services provided. They will not have access to freely go behind the scenes.
I understand.
As now people will walk, just walk right into Lisa's office or other, any other offices.
We kind of identified the biggest impact that people might find as a difference is that after hours, um, the, and on weekends, the bathrooms aren't going to be, uh, open to the public. Um, so that, what's, what's happened is, is that becomes a security risk, really. We found people, there, it becomes people in and out of the, in and out of the, the city hall when there's no one else but a, you know, one, one shift of police here. So, that's when it becomes a little bit more secure.
Was there any discussion of the glass windows, for instance, in Lisa's world in terms of security?
They're going to, they're going to be.
That'll be tightened up as well?
See, the finance has the thick bullet, or shatterproof.
Ballistic, they call it.
Ballistic glass. But when they were, when, when the glass was replaced before our tenure, the clerk office, they didn't want that glass, and I don't think code wanted it. So, uh, but that was several years back.
And that makes sense, except for the world is changing.
Exactly, exactly. Now, it's not really going to be the person that sits behind those desks to make that decision.
It's not a what-if.
That's the difference, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close workshop portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first item to vote on, we have approval of the minutes for July eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve minutes from July eleventh and July twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please. Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holzman?
Yes.
Next is, uh, do I have a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero-one-seven, and that is our salary ordinance?
Motion to introduce ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero-one-seven.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please. Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holzman?
Yes.
We do not have any public hearings or ordinance adoptions. So the next, we will open it up to the public again if you'd like to speak on any of the resolutions that we're going to be voting on. Sorry, I know.
That seems redundant, doesn't it?
I know, it does.
It does.
You seem like we already ha, opened it up to any questions that we've already talked about.
It does.
Do we need that second?
You have three public comment periods, which is more than any other municipality.
Yeah, we need to.
You could probably eliminate the middle one, quite honestly.
Yes, okay. So we're going to eliminate that one, and we're going to go ahead and finish voting, and then.
Open to the public.
Open to the public, how's that? Okay? Hold tight. Okay. We had, do I have a motion to adopt resolutions by consent, number two thousand nineteen dash two fifty-two to two thousand nineteen dash two seventy-two?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please. Mr. Kriebel?
Yes.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holzman?
Yes.
We're okay? We're not, we, we have our safety report written in the.
Forgot bills and payroll.
Bills.
Oh, I'm, I, I did that again, I'm so sorry.
Here at the bottom.
Ah, you know what? Where is it?
Right at the very bottom.
Oh, you know what? Cause, yeah, I'm so sorry, Al, I'm sorry. We have, Al, will you please give us our bills and payroll? I'm so sorry.
Waited all year.
It's squished in in the pile, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the bill list for, for this period is, is two million, sixteen thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars, twenty-four cents, uh, and payroll was six hundred thirty-nine thousand, eleven dollars, eighty-nine cents.
Okay. Lisa, can you bold that next time for me, please?
It is bold.
Make, you know, make the print bigger, it's real tiny, I'm sorry, Al. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated by our CFO?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please. Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holzman?
Yes.
Just do control, enter, and it moves it to the next page, and.
No, why do I, are you, you want to read it?
I will, no, I will mention.
Announce the safety report?
Yeah, one thing in there that I think is, uh, appropriate. We, uh, the GIFs did cover our, um, lease replacement, correct? For the ladder trucks.
It's a covered part of our policy.
Yeah, so that was one, uh, another positive of the GIFs. So we had a damage to our, our T-one, the main ladder, and while it's being, we got, when, when it goes into, uh, repair mode, we get a loaner. For the time period that was covered in our, uh.
Not exactly the same type of vehicle, but it's, we'll have a ladder.
Right.
We're not keeping that one like we were a few years ago.
We just have to replace, return it with the same amount of gas that we got it.
Go rent a car. There you go, okay. I like that.
Knowing that that, that was a illegally parked car, their insurance company should be also paying some of this, correct?
I believe they're paying the majority of it.
They are, yeah.
I'm sure there's limitations on their corporate policy.
Right.
They're the ones that got the, the ones that got there.
I don't think they'll do that again. At least that driver won't.
It was a stable racing with CPR all.
Right.
Their parked car.
Yeah. It's, can't block a corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, uh, any commissioner reports or comments? And then we're going to open it up to the public.
I got a couple.
Go ahead. Commissioner Langria?
So, if you've noticed, on every Saturday for, gosh, probably since the spring, we've had our crews out working on storm drains. So we've worked through the heights, um, cleaning out cross drains, siphon systems, and the runs that get to the pumps, in some cases. So they've been working through, they've worked through the heights so far. They've been working in Venter Gardens most recently, and they've been hitting Venter Avenue pretty heavily the past three weeks. What they do is they go in and they jet the line, and they use our undersized Vaxa truck that we have. The new truck will be a lot easier to do this. And they're, they're cleaning out these lines, and they're finding blockages. So these, just to very quickly explain how drainage works on the island. From Atlantic Avenue to the ocean goes to the ocean. Everything else goes to the bay. So it has to go under each of the roads to get there.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, this is rainwater. So this water goes in an inlet, goes down, goes underneath the road, bubbles up on the other side, and continues. Those lines are there for years, and they're small. So we've been cleaning those out. This was Ed Stinson's program that he started, I'm going to say probably in March or April, when the weather broke. Um, so every Saturday, the crews are out doing that, um, cleaning that stuff out. So just an update on that.
I, I will say that I was rowing in that storm on Saturday, and all the storm drains along.
Were firing out at you, right? Like cannons.
Yeah.
Good, good.
People made note of it, they were like, hey, these would really work.
They're good.
Well, if by them doing that proactively, that can eliminate problems, yes?
It'll, it helps.
It helps.
And I say this when, when people call and have concerns about stormwater and ponding in the streets. If you live inland, you live in a development, you have stormwater basins, large, big, empty areas that hold stormwater, the volume that is created when, when it hits impervious surface and runs into those, those basins. We don't have them here. They're our streets. That's how, that's what they function as, not by design, but by need. There's nowhere for that water to go. You cannot handle a two-inch rainstorm that came down in two hours. It just, you can't put the water somewhere. So we will flood, we will flood. What this does, it gets the water out faster, gets it to our pumps faster. You'll see in the next few months, you'll see things starting up where we're doing some improvements to those systems. Kingswood, Kingsley Drive, behind there, it's a major drainage problem back there. Kingsley floods, Lafayette floods, and that portion of Wellington floods significantly, at the corner past the school.
Yeah.
We're redoing all that. So that'll help that area. Venter Avenue's been a little better since, since they've been cleaning them. The problem we're running into now is, it's an old system, it's a county road. We know the county's not going to help pay for that when they do their street improvements there. We're going to ask, but I'm pretty sure I know what that answer's going to be. Uh, some of it is their water on, from Venter Avenue, but, um, from an aspect of, of, we're going to have to most likely put that in, in our capital improvements and get that fixed, too. Another one that's coming up, you've noticed a, a, uh, road barrel on a, a traffic hazard barrel at Dorset Avenue.
Yes.
At, uh, Cowford Avenue, thank you.
Good morning.
There is a, there is a sewer line there that we're having issues with. Uh, we're hoping that will hold off till summer is over, before we dig up that road. We are in design, in the next few weeks, Ed's putting that out to our pool of engineers, to redesign that system. It's a county road, it's a concrete road, it's going to be expensive, and we're going to have a significant improvement to, to fix this issue. It's a break in the line. So we're, it, it, right now, it's, it's a small problem, we're hoping it holds off until September. We don't want to shut that road down.
No.
In the summer.
And we have a, a, a road paving grant?
Not in that section.
Not in that section?
Not in that section.
They're doing the other.
Yeah, they're doing up past Wellington going towards Ski Beach.
Okay.
And that's still in design, that's, that's a little ways away. It's probably spring, the next summer, time for that one. Pier lights, um, lightning has not been our friend this summer. Uh, the pier got struck, I'm going to say, three weeks ago. We lost phones, computer, Wi-Fi, and the lights from the restroom back to the boardwalk. Trying to replace those lights was, was extremely difficult. Uh, we got some prices, they varied, and they had about a ten-thousand-dollar difference between one and the other. Um, so I believe we've hired Horn Electric. They've come up with a solution that we don't have to replace poles, we replace heads, LED heads, and do a, do a little better job, so, uh, we're working on that. Just an update quickly on the pier bathrooms. We had some discussions, we submitted plans to the DEP. Uh, finally got some good answers back from them. We do not need a special permit or a, a individual permit.
Wow.
It's called a GP, General Permit thirteen. I believe that was the number. So, that's moving forward.
Great.
Door and engineering will be submitting that application soon. Um, I know I talked to Commissioner Kriebel about getting the, getting the bids out to build it.
And I passed that on to Kathy and.
So it's, we're going to move forward with that as soon as we can, for whatever reason, my computer's bringing up press articles.
No, you're getting obituaries.
Yeah.
I don't know either.
But that's great news, I did pass that one, I'll follow up to make sure that, now that we have some solid progress.
And that's a, that's a much quicker turnaround permit than, than having an individual permit. Individual is six to nine months.
Yes. Another season.
Little, little assistance from, um, Senator Brown, and one of our weekend residents is a deputy commissioner of the DEP. Doesn't help to pin his ear a little bit, which I saw him on our beach a couple of weeks ago.
I'm giving that.
So, he was happy to hear that he was, his staff was helping out, so, that should be under construction this winter.
Good.
That'd be good.
So, it'll be good.
I'll press him again on that.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay. Tim, you're good?
I, yeah, I have plenty today.
I think, do we have a meeting before the seafood fest, or no? Yeah, that's without doubt.
No, the seafood fest is September seventh?
Yeah.
And next to me is, that's for a while.
Yeah, so September seventh.
September seventh is this, the Downbeat Seafood Fest. We're excited, they're coming to Ski Beach, and it's Commissioner Kriebel's birthday, so we're going to have a big cake in the middle. But, um, more and more, I mentioned it when we had a meeting, and we had a town hall meeting, because I did it in my head, going around the city, and it's, good thirty businesses have come to Venter over the last three years, which is great, it's a small town, and having things like the seafood fest, it's, um, it's great. It's, it's good for the city, it's good.
John Henderson runs an unbelievable, um, he does Beer Fest in Atlantic City. He did this in Atlantic City for years, and, you know, look at another option, so. It, it's going to be a lot of fun, there'll, there'll be local restaurants, some out-of-the-area restaurants. Uh, I know some Venter restaurants are, are involved as well. I think Tudor Fresco's going to be there. I'm not sure about some of the newer ones, um, Palia and, um, Aroma, but we'll have a lot of local support there.
They have an area for kids, it's not just, yeah.
From, uh.
Yeah, he's always involved, yeah.
He's involved. I saw the layout, which was.
Yeah, you showed it to us.
Unbelievable, it's got, I don't, I don't know how many tents were set up for, uh.
Forty different venues.
Forty.
Forty different venues.
Yep.
And the center is all geared up for different things.
And a beer tent.
A beer tent, uh.
An area for kids, activities for kids.
There we go. If you, if you enter by water, like a paddleboard or a kayak, you get five dollars off your entrance fee.
Yeah.
It's really turn, going to turn out to be, I think, a really kind of a nice version of the, what was really a sprawling one in Atlantic City.
Right.
I think this will be.
Be condensed, yep.
Right.
Condensed version, it's going to have fencing all around, and an area for kids to play. And then a turnaround for shuttles from, uh, from the old Tropicana parking area, so there'll be.
I think Acme area, too, right?
To help lessen the impact of parking.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm very, I think it's going to be a great day, a great way to turn.
I think so, too.
Fifty-two.
Pray for good weather.
Pray for good weather. Okay.
It does.
It does.
Yep.
All right, I think we're good, so now, do I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion to open to public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now you can get up and say anything you'd like, you first need to state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Flora Winston, and I have, um, a condo at one-eleven South Buffalo. So I had, uh, sent you an email earlier this summer about, um, about dog permitting as an idea for.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, so let me just, um, let me convey it. So, one of the joys I have is having my dog on the beach with me this summer. He's a therapy dog at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, is about seven pounds. And, um, we have a, and I just wanted to share with you a potential for both making sure that good dogs are on the beach, and then, secondly, actually bringing in revenue. So I live in Lower Marion during the year, and we have something called an off-leash dog permit. And what that is, I'm not saying necessarily the dogs need to be off-leash, but just to give you the idea, is that you have to demonstrate that the dog has had obedience training, and that the dog has, um, has, uh, has all its shots, and you have to, um, do the shots every single year, and then you get, actually, you have to buy a license. And so, um, so it actually, I think, you know, we could come up with really cute things about what the dogs would wear, or whatever it might be, it might be a cute leash that they would use, or something like that. But I think it could be a way that we could start to deal with some of the dog problems, and then allow dogs to be there in the morning and at night, possibly. Because I, I mean, when I'm walking in the morning, I want to be there with my dog. And, you know, it just was crazy when, I mean, I understand why they were doing it, but when the police come up to me with, like, a seven-pound dog who I'm holding, you know, that's, it just doesn't feel right. So, anyway, I think I'd sent you the information about, um, what we do, but it's really a wonderful program. There are two parks in, um, Lower Marion that are, well, one's in Gladwin, one's in Penn Valley. And the dogs, I, I don't know of any problems, people care for it. So it just was an idea that we could potentially have a portion of the beach that could be, you know, at certain hours, allow dogs to be off-leash. And then, not the off-leash.
I have no issue with, with the, the dogs?
Mm-hmm.
I'm a dog owner, I know Beth's got.
I've got three dogs.
Three, huh? It's the people.
I get it.
They don't clean up after their dog.
Well, that's what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying, that, Beth said the same, the mayor said the same thing to me.
How does that stop people not cleaning up?
Because the, the issue is that they would, it would be incredibly visible which dog it was. You know, so like, if the police were going by, they would see whose dog it was.
Yeah, but if they don't see it, that's when they don't pick it up, that's, that's my issue with it.
I think, I think the mentality, when you get a license and you, you pay for something and you put your name, you.
It implies, I completely agree with that.
Yeah, I think people.
My issue is people.
Right.
They will not clean up after their dogs.
Well, I think with the license.
Clean up after the dogs would probably be the ones that wouldn't get the license, that wouldn't be allowed.
That was the point.
That's the mentality, yes, that's what I think.
So the, the.
Send it to me again, so I can.
Yeah.
For, because you sent me all the information, but we, I, we have to talk like this, so I'm glad you came.
Yeah.
Did I tell you, I wrote the same thing back to you? That the people don't clean up.
Yes, that was the first thing. But see, the whole point was, the whole point is that the people who get the off-leash dog permits in Lower Marion, because they have to go through all of these steps. But see, the whole point was, the whole point is that the people who get the off-leash dog permits in Lower Marion, because they have to go through all of these steps...
Right.
You know, it's, it's weeding out the people who are just coming out there and doing all the craziness.
You would think.
Yeah.
I'm telling you that's, I'm telling you that's what it is.
So when, when our visitors come over the bridge to come to New Jersey, that sense of whatever is gone. They, they do whatever they want when they come here. I, I...
I guess, I, I don't know, I mean...
Parking, you know, dogs running loose, it's, it's a shame, they don't care for our island like they do their home areas.
Well, I mean, I...
And I'll say that as, because I, I sit and watch them on the beach.
I pick up, but...
Throw their stuff down.
I pick up all the plastic, I see, so, but I...
Walked the beach with me one day, asked the lifeguards, because I hand it to them, and...
I just wonder if you...
Not the dog waste, but plastic and whatever, but it's...
I completely agree with you, it bothers me.
It's frustrating, so, look, I would love to see it, I'd love to take my, my dog on the walk, on the beach in the mornings, we do it at night, but we had, we tried to allow hours when we first got here.
Yes, we, we tried to add morning hours, oh.
Oh, you would have thought we were bringing in, you know, elephants or something, I mean, oh my gosh.
Yeah, we wanted to add, like, an hour in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
People, because most people that want to go on the beach with their dog, it's early, it's not nine o'clock.
No, and at seven to nine, you're eating dinner anyway.
Seven, maybe 68.
Exactly, exactly.
Six to eight.
Let me ask you a question, you have a service dog, correct?
He's actually a, a therapy dog.
A therapy dog.
Uh-huh.
You don't use him for, for the service, he's, he...
He actually goes and visits the children at the hospital.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's not a service dog.
You know what I was going to ask, don't you?
Yeah.
You know exactly what I was going to ask.
Yeah, he's a therapist, but he's...
Because if it's a therapy dog for you, under ADA, she can go everywhere and anywhere with that dog.
Yeah, I could lie about it and get that.
But you know, you're good, see, that's why you have one of those licenses.
I like the idea, I, I just...
But the reality is, you know, I mean...
The reality is going to be tough doing this.
Right.
Well, just think about it, it could be a fundraiser, you know, I mean, we already have beach tags.
How much do the, they cost in your municipal?
You know, I don't remember, I thought it's like 35 or something.
Not a big amount, but it's...
Right, right.
Look, I'm happy looking, I would love to, love to do it.
Send it, send it to me again, and then I'll forward it all, okay?
And I thank you all so much for what you do, I think, um, it's a, it's a wonderful place to come to, and it's thanks to all of you.
Thank you very, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone else? Yes, come up to the mic, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Joan Foltz, Nashville Avenue.
You're not allowed to, no, teasing you, Joan.
I'm back again, no. Here, um, my issue is, the street cleaning is stopped during the summer months, and what I've found is, the people who have a registered car that live on my street, they park their car, it's a parking issue, they park their car, like, there's been a car in front of my house, it'll be three weeks on Sunday, and they're not moving the car, and it's not just one car, it's two cars, because my neighbor was complaining about another car that the people have, they just park the cars. So, I understand that this just started about a year ago, that you ended the street cleaning from, like, July 4th until Labor Day, but, and I know that parking is a crunch, I mean, I live on Asheville, it's an issue. I'm fortunate enough to have a driveway, but we do have a tenant that has one car that we want to use on the street, and with people parking their cars for, th- this person legally, because the car is registered, I did call the police department, and I gave the license plate number, and he told me it is a registered car, he does have the parking permit in the car, showing, but technically, he can park his car from July 4th until Labor Day in front of my house if he really wanted to, so...
Doesn't he go out? This per, don't they leave?
No.
They don't use their car?
No, they just park it in front of the houses, and it's, it's been there, I have it on my secu, because I wasn't sure, I'm like, gosh, this car has been here for a while, and I went, I have a security, I have, I have a sit ring, so I went on my ring system, and I saw exactly when the car was parked, and it has not moved since, it was August 4th, the car's been in front of my house.
August 4th.
So, my thing is, okay, do you want to bring back weekly street cleaning, because then people have to move...
You wouldn't like that, Joan.
Yeah.
Because, the reason, just so you know, the reason we stopped during the summer months is because people had a jockey from one side to the other.
I get it.
And there was nowhere to jockey your car.
Right.
It may, we, I mean, people, so many people were getting ticket, it, it, it didn't make sense.
And I get that.
But that's not really the issue, the issue is that you have a resident who was parking their car for a long period of time in front of your house, and I don't think we really can do anything about it.
But can't you, if we're do, if, if you did away with the street cleaning for the summer months, can't we somehow limit the amount of time that they're allowed to park in one spot?
Because that would affect you and everybody else.
Is it, is it a neighbor, you know the person?
It is a neighbor.
Have you talked to her?
I will not get involved with that, because I lived in Northfield for 30 years prior, and I had a neighbor across the street that had stray cats, which, they just, like, took 18 cats out of her house, the animal control, last year, and I tried to be a good neighbor and say, you know, your cats are going to the bathroom all over my house, and blah, 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 and she basically told me to, you know.
Right.
So, I am not, I, at this point, after that whole situation, I don't confront people, I'd rather go through, but there's nothing, I, I'm just here because... Do you know who it is?
Yeah.
Do they have a driveway?
No, they live right next to the townhouses that are going up, and that's another reason, the builders of the townhouses, they, he would, they were talking to another neighbor who said that they had a problem with these people about an issue, and they're very nasty, and they will not, you know, and that's even more the reason why I won't talk to, you know. I get that the parking's a problem, but they could legally park in front of my house for two months, and it's just not right, it's like, I would like to park, we can't park in front of my house because they tie up the, and they don't leave, it's like, I thought it was an abandoned car.
The only, the only thing that I can think of that might be of any help in the future is that we're looking at that whole area, we did, that's the first word, we did an audit of the number of spots that are in that area, and we found that there's, in the neighborhood of 900 parking spots in your neighborhood, from Jackson to about Little Rock. Um, and then we also found out that there's, uh, we've been giving out, in the neighborhood of three to four parking passes to the high-rises, um, which is just too many, it ends up being north of 5,000 parking spot, parking passes, when you add them all up.
Right.
So, thi- this coming year, we're going to be looking at that entire neighborhood, so my only, what, we're, we're, we're reducing the number of parking passes and charging for some of them, that will also reduce it, so, that being said, that'll reduce the number of people in the whole area that have two, ability to stay longer than two hours in parking spots, so that could create, um, you know, a little bit better.
I mean, it's just...
But there's just too many, too many cars, there's, that, that ratio in that area is just too dense.
It's just very frustrating, I would like to park, like, not me, because I'm fortunate enough to have a driveway, but our tenant, you know, he's got to park around the corner on Hillside just to get a parking spot, we, we don't ever have the opportunity, so...
And the townhouses will have each two parking spots, I think?
Well, the townhouses have a driveway and they have a garage, too, so hopefully, but see, that's the other problem, because there's driveways there now, and you can't park it...
Lost some spaces on the street.
So you're losing even more parking spaces with the driveways.
Yeah, so, other cities, because we're doing some of this, do things like charge for, um, parking passes, but, uh, and hundreds of dollars, we're not going to be, be doing that, but...
It's going to be more than $2.
It's going to be more than $2, but, uh, it's, 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 it's a problem all season long.
I know, I know, but I, it's just like...
And then, like...
Three weeks, I'm like, come on, you know.
Yeah.
The other thing, too, is a girlfriend of mine asked me, her daughter lives in Ventnor, across the street from Rite Aid, and I told her I was coming here today, and, um, her daughter is handicapped, how do they decide where handicapped spots are designated in the city? Because her daughter drives, she has MS, and, you know, she, she's going through her own thing of her aches and pains and all that, and she's got to walk pretty far, so she said, how do they determine where are handicapped spots?
Right now, the only, the only ones in the right of way that I'm aware of are in, either metered, in the metered lots...
Okay.
Or out here in front of City Hall. We don't, we don't put them out, and, and this was advice of PD...
Yeah.
Not to put them in neighborhoods, because then everybody's going to want one, and then that just limits the number of spaces you have even more.
Yeah.
We really don't do them, and that's not just our policy, that's been city's policy for a long time.
Right.